Stand with me with the flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go on with the regular agenda, I wanted to make a couple of announcements. This Saturday, the summer farmers market will -- excuse me, no, the winter farmers market will be opening on Eighth Street between Railroad Avenue and Main Street downtown. And there will also be the dedication of the new sculptures at Singer Creek Falls. It'll be at 10:00 a.m., Saturday, the 5th. And I think we all have a copy of the announcement from Safeway. When we had a groundbreaking at Safeway early last spring or late in the winter, after groundbreaking, they said they were going to be open for Thanksgiving. Well, the grand opening is going to be November 9th. That's a Wednesday at 9:00 a.m. And everybody's invited to go to that grand opening of Safeway. I'll be out of town unfortunately, but I hope some of my fellow commissioners can make it to that opening. Have there any other kinds of announcements of that nature that would be -- should be made now before everybody leaves before the end of the meeting? When they're usually made. With that, we'll go on to citizen comments. This allows citizens three minutes to make reservations. We do ask if you have code complaints, city service complaints, or traffic ticket issues, please contact the appropriate city department. You may want to do it through the city manager. As a general practice, the city commissioner does not engage in discussions with those making comments. Prior to speaking, citizens should fill out a comment form and hand it to our city recorder. Begin always by stating your name and your residing city. With that, we're going to open citizens' comments. And we have Andrea Sargent and Laurie Hanlon. Would you please come up forward as the two speakers here? And we'll start with Andrea.
Good evening, Mayor Neely, Commissioners. My name is Andrea Sargent. I'm from Comcast in Beaverton, and I wanted to come talk with you tonight about an Internet service that we're rolling out this fall. It is aimed at low-income subscribers, and our goal is to try to close the digital divide. We have put this service together to respond to what the FCC has identified as three major barriers to Internet connection for low-income folks. One of those is cost, another one is digital literacy, and the third one is lack of understanding of the relevance for broadband service. What we are offering is broadband Internet service for $9.95. That will include our Internet Economy Service. It will also include the option to purchase a $150 computer for folks who don't have a computer already. And for that, they get access to in-print training, in-class training. We have some nonprofit partners who are working with us to provide training to these customers. There are no additional fees, other than applicable taxes. No additional fees, no modem rental fees. They will never be upsold into a different package. They also get our Norton antivirus suite that all Internet subscribers have access to. In order to be eligible for the service, they have to reside in our footprint where we offer Internet service. They have to have at least one child who is eligible for free lunches under the National School Lunch Program. They can't subscribe to Comcast Internet Service within the past 90 days, and they can't have an overdue bill or unreturned equipment. So, the goal here, obviously, is to make -- to create more opportunities for teachers to take advantage of online educational tools, for students to take advantage of those. And then, obviously, their families will be able to use that service to pay bills or look for jobs or do any of the other millions of things we do online every day. We are hoping we have the potential to reach nationwide about six and a half million students who qualify. Here in Oregon City, the number of students who qualify for the free lunches is right around 35 percent approximately. So, obviously, this could have a pretty big impact for Oregon City students if we can get the word out. And that's why I'm here. I'm leaving you a copy of this presentation. It has my contact information. There are also -- you also each have a copy of our partner brochure and the brochure that we can give to potential customers that shows them how to get access to that service. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
This is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We hope it takes off. We'd really like to get this going.
Thank you.
I'm really happy about this. I'm concerned about senior citizens, though. They're not going to have a child in a program with --
Oh, true point.
This -- our goal right now are -- this is an experimental program for us, so to start with, we're focusing on the free lunch program students.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Hi. I'm here tonight to report on the Caulfield Neighborhood Association. Thank you, Chief Conrad, for supplying us a place to meet, but we've outgrown you. We're looking for a home.
Well, that's a good thing.
Yes, great thing. The other thing I want to discuss about the police is we had a little discussion at our last Neighborhood Association meeting, and it was over the traffic in front of the high school. And we had some people stand up and say that the police won't respond to them. And we looked at that problem, and it was addressed the next day. The SWAT team was out there. Not literally the SWAT team. It was addressed.
Nice.
The next thing is we finally got the letter in today requesting the overnight parking for disabled veterans in the park. And the next project, I need you to understand, we're not asking for city money for part two of this. We're going to go out and find the funding for handicap-accessible parking. And, you know, we don't know what part of the river that's going to be on, if it's going to be adjacent to --
City parking, you meant fishing.
Yes, I meant fishing. All right, thank you. Now you broke my train of thought. But anyway, we want to find the funding on our own. We don't want to come to you guys and beg for money. And that's all I have.
Ooh, and you have new officers.
We have new officers in Caulfield, one of which I was re-elected.
Yay.
And Gary Davis is the Secretary Treasurer, and the co-chairman is Mike Merblestein.
Great.
Thank you for your time.
I just want to comment, I appreciate you inviting me to the last Neighborhood Association. I was extremely impressed. I think your reinstituted Neighborhood Association's been in existence for about a year. And I think you perhaps had 50 or more people at that Neighborhood Association. I was extremely impressed.
Wow, that's wonderful.
Had some great questions that were posed by the citizens that were there. And it's just, I'm just so pleased to see the tremendous work you all have done. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Then we'll have William Gifford, of course.
Well, that's handy. Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. And I have two items of interest regarding the Citizen Involvement Council. One, at the last city commission, I made an announcement about the upcoming Emergency Preparedness Community Forum. And I think that all of you are aware that there has been a change of venue for that forum, but I wanted to make sure that our listening audience is aware that it is going to be next Thursday night at 7:00 p.m. That's on November 10th at 7:00 p.m. And it's going to be at the Providence Willamette Falls Education Center, which is cat a corner from Abernathy Center on --
Fifteenth and Washington.
Fifteenth and Washington, yeah, on Washington Street.
Five one nine Fifteenth Street.
Fifteenth and Washington at 7:00 next Thursday. The topic is going to be earthquakes and general emergency preparedness, and we have a panel of experts to come and talk about earthquakes. The second order of business, I want to let you know some really joyous news. After almost three years of work, we have all of the Neighborhood Associations reactivated.
Yay.
Last week, we --
Wow, that's great.
Last week, we reactivated the Gaffney Lane Neighborhood Association. The new chair is a fellow gentleman by the name of Terry Campbell, and he's going to be the chair. And Kim, his wife, is going to be secretary. And Chris Wadsworth and I are going to be helping them along the way because they really are not familiar with Neighborhood Associations yet. But Terry has administrative experience in being a former school principal. And so, he understands that, and they're very passionate about helping the community. And so, we're very excited to have them onboard. The treasurer will continue to be Michelle Benneville, and our land use chair for Gaffney Lane will be Derek Benneville. And we are -- and our next meeting is going to be on January 26th, so we'll be getting more notices out there. And we're very excited to have all 11 Neighborhood Associations reactivated.
When was the Tower Vista reactivated?
Tower Vista was the penultimate Neighborhood Association reactivated, and that was two months ago, I believe. Two months ago, yeah. And they are already excited about getting some activities going, so.
Tower Vista, the Barclay Hills, I believe, was the first one that originally came into being. I think Tower Vista came in after.
Well, excuse me, not -- oh, the first one that ever came into being, yes.
Yes, yes.
Insofar as back in the '90s, I believe, it was --
Way back then.
Originally proclaimed.
I think it was, Tower Vista was next. I think they were the first two. And it's good to see them back.
Yeah, full circle, full circle. We got them all anyway, so I'm very excited about it.
That's very exciting. Good job.
And then Paul Edgar.
I'm going to be on another issue.
Oh, okay, very good. With that, we'll go into our regular agenda. And we're going to have a public hearing, the continuance of L-1002 Water Master Plan, continuing the September 21st regular meeting. And Tony Scott, sorry, Tony Conkles is going to be on the staff for a second.
Thank you, Mayor, Evening Commissioners.
Excuse me just a moment. And David Frazier might want to say something, too.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Commission, on our advice, we'd like to recommend that you pull item 8C for legal review by the city attorney. We had a letter from the Oregonian kind of last minute today objecting to some of the language, and we want to redo that.
That's a polite way for him to tell me I forgot adoption of the agenda item number five before I went into public hearings. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Conkles.
Thank you. This is concerning the Water Master Plan, File L-1002. We are still continuing public testimony with the Planning Commission. We've also scheduled additional public meetings on this matter, including a public and formal presentation on Monday, November 21st at 7:00. A meeting with the Citizen Involvement Council on Monday, December 5th at 7:00 p.m. The next Planning Commission hearing is scheduled for Monday, December 12th at 7:00 p.m. And then, we'll also be holding a work session with the City Commission on Tuesday, December 13th at 5:30. All those meetings will be here at City Hall in the chambers. So, we are requesting that you take any public testimony from any citizen here tonight who wishes to comment, and then continue with the record open to the date certain of January 18th, 2012.
So, anybody wishing to address this particular, the Water Master Plan issue here?
Yes, I believe so.
Mayor Neely, City Commissioners, my name is Paul Edgar. I'm a land use chair of the Kanema Neighborhood Association. I've looked and continue to look seriously at this Water Master Plan, and I wanted to make sure that you guys were aware that when we looked at some of the future plans that included piping into Kanema, a lot of that piping was in areas that are part of metro natural areas. That some of the, a lot of what was in this master plan is really not applicable. And so, when I started looking at it, I started thinking to myself, wow, are we proceeding ahead with a master plan that has infrastructure recommendations that are not applicable? And I know for sure that there are when it comes to Kanema. But how about the rest of the area? So, we're starting to make some moves on a master plan that really affects sizing of pipes and infrastructure that can really obligate future monies. And if it's not firm or fully thought out, we have a completely changing world now in how economic or how new development might occur. We've had two annexations or multiple annexations go before the voters and not necessarily get a thumbs up. And so, when we see what is going to happen within the UGB, but not part of the city of Oregon City, this is part of what this Water Master Plan covers. So, we have the obligation to say, as the governmental agency that is set to be the, if annexation does happen, to be responsible for what goes into those areas. And but it's not happening the way people have really thought it was going to happen. And so, we really start, need to go back and really take a serious look at growth and where growth is going to happen, and make sure that that gets thought out and put into the plan. Another critical issue that is of very, an importance to me, is that as a 71-year-old, I look at people trying to age in place. And we have 50 million people in the United States with, let's say, $1,200 or less gross income per month. And we have a lot of people in Oregon City with low income. And if we start trying to take money out, we, I'm concerned that this plan puts into place an opportunity where water rates can go up much higher than they need to go up. And that really concerns me. Because all of a sudden, we get to a point where people with sewer rates going up and stormwater rates going up and preventive maintenance road fees going up, and then we start throwing on water rates and Medicare going up quadrupling in 2014, can people, many seniors, afford to live in their home? And so, we've got to be very, very cognizant of not stressing everything out. And when I started looking at this plan, all I could see is a major opportunity where our water rates could get out of hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to general business, then, and an ordinance for introduction.
We have a motion to a date certain.
We need to continue that, please.
Oh, on the continuance. You've got a schedule here, I believe. Is that right?
Yes, but I do request that we do continue the public hearing on this matter to the date certain of January 18th, 2012.
Here's such a motion.
I'll move that we continue this.
It's been moved and seconded, moved by Commissioner Roth and seconded by Commissioner Mum. Roll call.
Commissioner Nacida.
Aye.
Commissioner Mum.
Aye.
Commissioner Roth.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Neely.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, and that was 5-0. And general business, ordinance for introduction, number 111010, granting a telecommunication franchise to Quest Communications LLC to occupy certain rights of way within the city of Oregon City. And I believe that Nancy Ide is going to be spokesperson there.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners and Mayor, Mayor and Commissioners. We have a second reading this evening for the franchise ordinance for Quest Communications Company. And if you recall at your last meeting, you approved the first reading, and we are here for another reading. If you have any further questions, we can, with the city attorney is here as well to help answer questions.
So, do I hear a move for a second reading by adoption?
I move to approve a second reading and final adoption.
Ooh, I'm making points. For ordinance number 11-1010, granting the renewal of telecommunication franchise to Quest Communications Company, LLC, to occupy certain rights, right-of-ways within the city of Oregon City.
Second.
I'll call for the reading.
This is ordinance number 111010, an ordinance granting a telecommunications franchise to Quest Communications Company, LLC, to occupy certain rights of way within the city of Oregon City.
A vote, please.
Commissioner Nacida.
Aye.
Commissioner Mum.
Aye.
Commissioner Roth.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Neely.
Aye. Just in case people don't know, I've got this tendency to call for the vote before the reading is done. So, anyway. The next report is Resolution 1124, amending city commission rules for procedure. Our staff. Jan, Nancy.
Okay, so at your last meeting, you had asked for a mild change to the resolution to include the source of, and the document that is being accessed during, from the Internet during meeting, a work session meeting. And so, if you refer to page, I believe it's page eight in the ordinance or the resolution, it highlights it there what the language is.
I have hearing session.
I can read it into the record if you'd like.
Go ahead, we've got it here.
Use of such devices is generally permitted only at work sessions so long as the source and the content of the information is disclosed to the public, and access to information remains courteous to guests and meeting attendees. The main portion was that the source and the content of the information is disclosed.
Anything else? We've seen this before.
Yeah. I move to approve Resolution number 11-24, amending the city commission rules of procedure. Second.
Vote, please.
Commissioner Nacida.
Aye.
Commissioner Mum.
Aye.
Commissioner Roth.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Neely.
Aye. With that, we'll go on to the Senate agenda, the item C having been pulled.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Nacida.
Aye.
Commissioner Mum.
Aye.
Commissioner Roth.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Neely.
We're going way too fast. We're not used to this. The meeting's like over, I don't even remember.
I don't know if I said aye, but I'm saying aye now.
Very tough.
Okay, with that, communications, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple things. First of all, at the dedication of the art this weekend, Rotary's also going to have a booth there set up, so if you want to donate to the project or if you want to become a Rotary member, all of that will be possible there as well as seeing the dedication, so I wanted to mention that. Also, wanted to give you a little update on Ermtinger House. And I have been keeping in close contact with both Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Neely about this, but you, the commission adopted as one of its goals to restore the Ermtinger House seven months ago. And when we started, we had zero dollars dedicated to that. And at this date, seven months later, we have amassed $270,000 toward the restoration of that property.
Yay.
So, that's a lot of hard work. Thank you for everybody's help. And that's funds that are actually going to be deposited in a separate account. We're creating a separate account in our finance system so that there won't be competition to take those dollars out and use them for something else, and they won't automatically go back into general fund balances they normally would with unexpended funds at the end of the year. So, this also helps us accumulate that money and then pledge that to, when we apply for grants or when we try to convince other cities to join our efforts, we can show that that money's actually dedicated and restricted in that account. The other thing I need to mention is that when Commissioner Smith and Mayor Neely and I met with Mayor Adams in Portland and had a good reception to our efforts there to encourage Portland to participate with us in that restoration, I think it was about three weeks later when I learned on the radio that he wasn't going to run for office again. I was a little disappointed based on that one meeting that we had because I didn't know what that meant for the future of their interest in joining us. But I do think there's still probably some interest at the elected level. Our staff has encountered a little bit of difficulty in penetrating the staff wall, if you will, there. So, Mayor Neely and Commissioner Smith, I believe, are going to test their mettle and their lobbying skills, and they're going to take it to the streets with the Portland City Commission. We really appreciate your efforts on that. Wish you the best, and along the route, if there's anything we can do to help you, let us know. We can also make both hard and electronic copies of that presentation that we made to Mayor Adams. If you want those, just let us know, and we'll get them right to you.
I might just, on that particular issue, the McGlough Memorial Association, the last meeting, agreed to be a pastor, but they do want to meet with staff. I suggested yourself and Scott Archer.
Perfect, okay, great.
That's for funds that, are granting funds that could only go through a 501(c)(3) organization, which McGlough Memorial Association is.
So, the next issue I want to talk to you about is one you're already familiar with from Urban Renewal, and that is the letter from Historic Properties, LLC. And so, we need to know, I need to know if you are interested in having a dialogue with them, either in executive session or open session, and if you have a preference for which kind of session, please let me know. We don't have an attorney who can represent us on that at this moment, and I emailed you earlier that I am willing to make that selection for you if you'd like, but I haven't heard back, any feedback, and I don't want to take silence as a yes or a no. So, does anyone have any thoughts? Would you like me to go ahead and retain counsel for the commission for that exclusive issue? Or would you like to have more discussion about it?
I'd like to have the meeting, actually. I don't know if you've got consensus on that or not.
My preference is to retain counsel first and discuss the ramifications of any plan of action with counsel before we take any plan of action.
When I said meeting, I meant an executive session.
Meeting with our counsel.
Yeah.
You'll need executive session to get legal advice first, and then you can entertain whatever negotiations you want to that come out of that conference with your counsel. That would be what I would suggest.
I think the first step is retaining counsel and discussing the matter with counsel.
I've retained a few over the years, if you want me to find, you know, we do have some ideas, and we've got some recommendations, so I'll just check rates and finish my due diligence on that and try to get them here and somewhat up to speed on the file as quickly as possible and get a meeting with you before November 8th, I think, is the time that is, seems to be urgent to Historic Properties, so I'll try to accommodate that request as much as we can.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, we have a number of staff that need to report to you on some other issues. And we'll start with Scott Archer and the Sportcraft Boat Ramp.
Mayor, Commissioners, as I think you all know, we have a ribbon-cutting plan for our reopening of the Sportcraft Boat Ramp. It's actually been completed ahead of schedule and was open early, earlier than expected. It was opened a little over a week ago, I think. We have planned a ribbon-cutting ceremony on November 14th, that's a Monday, at 11:00 right at the boat ramp. And it'll be rain or shine. We'll have a large event tent set up should we have the type of weather we might expect this time of year. So, rain or shine, 11:00 a.m. at Sportcraft Boat Ramp. Of course, we would love it if you could all attend. Your work schedule's pending, of course, and then, of course, that's open for our, any community member that would be interested in attending as well. I know that Mayor Neely has committed to be available for some comments at that, and I believe we will also have a representative from the Oregon State Marine Board, who is our major funding partner, or more than one representative at the event, to help us do the dedication. Thank you.
Just because some people don't recognize that we're not talking about Sportcraft Marina, but we have public access off of a boat ramp there that is in bad need of repair, and has happened.
It's a very popular spot, and we heard from anxious voters and anglers to get that back open, so I think we'll have a lot of happy folks now.
And it looks beautiful.
Yes, it does, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And next, Chief Conrad is going to talk to you a little bit about the parking plan and the emergency operations exercise. The parking plan, we do have a document here that's about four pages with maps. Most of you have seen this before, but if you'd like, we can go ahead and transmit this document to you once again, so you'll be document to you once again, so you'll be familiar with what we're doing down there. You can let us know if you'd like that, and we'll send it to you. And Mike, if you could take it away.
Sure, and I have a couple extra copies too, if you'd like to have one of those that I have here. But the city is, we're getting ready to implement the first phase of the parking plan that the commission had already approved. And basically, what that first phase is, that we're going to replace the eight-hour meters with two-hour meters on Ninth Street between Main and 99, and on Main Street between Ninth and Tenth Street. And we're going to relocate those eight-hour meters to the north end of town, also implement the approved meter rate increase according to the parking study based on the 85% rule, then also implement the approved fine increase January 1st of next year, 2012.
I've got a question. I understand that some of those meters will be located for two-hour parking as well, not only for the reserve parking, but, is that right? Some of the old meters. Are they going to be at the increased rate?
I can cover it.
Yes. My understanding is they are going to be at the increased rate, right?
I've got a concern. We've got 100% increase on the meter area from the Century 10th and south. For people who want to, since we're not really metering parking there, I would like to see the old rate at the old meters when they're stationed from Tenth Street and north. We're giving a 100% increase in parking rates down there.
Mayor, if you want to amend your parking plan, we need to get it back in front of the, in front of the commission if you decide to do that. Only, only caveat I would mention is, and this is, no matter what city I've been a manager in, when there's been a parking plan, it's kind of like that sweater where you pull one string and a sleeve somewhere else comes off. So that plan is designed to, with both carrots and sticks, if you will, it's designed to modify behavior within the district where it's imposed.
I understand that, but you're modifying the behavior. You're giving the option to people to actually walk a little further and pay a lower rent.
Sure.
Mayor Neely?
Yeah.
If I, if I might, I think I can, I think I can help with this a little bit because of my history with, working with the parking plan before it was given over to Mike's department. If I'm understanding what you're saying, your concern is correctly, I think I can alleviate your concern. The north end meters are going to be at a significantly lower rate than the, what we're calling the core, which is south of 10th. Is that what you were speaking?
That's what I understood, and I was just clarifying it, and I thought.
It's an incentive rate.
Yes, so the, the north end, the north end meters rates, and I don't have the inform, I wasn't prepared for this tonight, and it's kind of Mike's thing now, but.
[Laughter]
So I don't recall the exact rates, however, I do know the principle pretty well, which was that the core was increasing, and we're adding metered parking to the north end, but the metered parking is significantly less than the core parking.
I just wanted, I just wanted.
Walk further and pay less.
Yeah, I was just talking to Nancy Bush about that today.
I just don't recall what the, I don't recall what the difference is in the rates, is the only thing.
She's trying to do that 85% thing before she looks at any change.
You mean 85% parking?
No, it's 85% occupancy.
That's what I meant. Occupancy means people that are actually parked.
She's looking at it really very carefully.
Okay.
So between this parking plan and the two-way streets that Nancy's going to be talking about, there's a lot of changes in the old town in the next 30 days. It's going to take people a while to get used to it. We are expecting some phone calls, you probably ought to as well. But I do think when people are used to it, that it'll be better than it's ever been. But it's going to take a little, a little adjustment for all of us.
Change is always hard.
Yeah. So I think we have one more. Nancy?
Yeah, okay, so David was saying that there are going to be a lot of changes, and we're going to be seeing them real soon. The, I think we need to look back, though, and this is, these kinds of changes we've been anticipating for about two years now, when we first started studying the downtown circulation, when we were reacting to the bridge being closed for two years. And due to all the efforts, just great project leadership by Main Street and my staff, we are reaching the point where we're going to be finishing that first project. So as early as Friday, if the weather is good, we will be grinding the diagonal parking striping off and replacing it with parallel parking striping, tics. And then we're, as part of that process, we will also be adding some spaces in front of the courthouse. So we, the net loss is three to five spaces with the loss of the diagonal at this time. When we do the Phase Two project, which is next year, we'll actually gain some more spaces back. But I wanted to let you know that because I'm sure there will be a lot of folks that are very concerned that they have fewer parking spaces in front of their businesses, and of course, we are too, but this is all part of the plan. The, they're getting better, better visual from the streets having two-way traffic. The other thing that is important to note is that because we're going to parallel parking, the old parking meters don't exactly fit the diagonal spaces. And the supplier or the distributor of the new solar parking stations is behind on delivery. We don't expect delivery until January. So we're going to do the best we can to see if we can line up any of the spaces with parking meters. But there is a good chance that some of the parking could be free for the next couple of months. We're going to see how it works out. It's really hard to tell until you're actually out there striping, so that could be a benefit for the next couple of months, too.
If you have questions, you can go to headoncollision.com.
So that being said, then following that, in the, within the next two weeks, we will be restriping to two-way traffic. So for about a week to 10 days, there'll still be one-way traffic, but with parallel parking. And then we'll be putting in the skip yellow line down the center, and then we'll be at two-way traffic between Sixth and Ninth, and that is going to be a big, big, big change for folks. We are, well, you've probably seen some of our banners around town, and we also are doing a video, we're using Funnel Box Downtown to prepare a video, that'll be a YouTube type of a video, and it's intended to be instructional and entertaining. It'll be using graphics and animation to show people how they need to get around downtown. I expect it to be really kind of fun and hopefully.
Where's it going to be viewed?
Pardon?
Where's this going to be viewed?
Well, we're going to, we're going to try to spread it as many places as we can. We're going to put it on our website, we're going to put it on the Police Department Facebook, the city's Facebook, the library's Facebook, and Lloyd is going to send it up, blast it out to everybody he knows. If you guys get it, put it on your Facebook, your personal Facebook. That doesn't necessarily get linked, you don't make friends with all these city people, but at least you.
We don't want to do that.
But seriously, you could put it on your Facebook, it would just go out to all your friends' friends, you know? And so it's, we're hoping we get that social media blitz. And so we're, that'll be good. And then we're also going to be, of course, releasing a press release. A press release Scott issued today, just an update on the striping up for the parking, and then we'll be also issuing another one when we actually do the two-way opening. The Police Department has offered to have some officers downtown the first couple of days as needed, and then we are also going to have a flagrant each corner in case we've got people that are confused or don't know where to go. And keep in mind, the biggest concern probably is the pedestrian, because pedestrians are used to looking one way, and now they really are going to have to look two-way. It's going to be, the parking's going to be different, so they might get some visual cues that'll make them pay attention. So I just want to make sure you guys know about that, because there could be a little bit of hullabaloo with all of this, and we're, we're trying to get through it as gracefully as possible, and we hope that we do get the findings that the planners found, determined during the study two years ago that said this is going to be good for our downtown.
Is there going to be some consideration, I don't know if this is for you, Mike, or for you, but some grace period of people that are on the wrong side of the street?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure we'll take that into consideration.
We don't, we don't take, we don't deal with.
They'll get consideration if they can show that they have a UK driver's license.
I love it.
And the last thing on my report is, Chief Conrad wanted to talk to us just a minute about the emergency operations exercise today.
For about the last six months, Clackamas County, Oregon City, and the surrounding cities have been working on a emergency management tabletop exercise, and that was conducted this morning at the city EOC, which is right above the fire station here on Seventh. Basically, what that means is we activated the emergency operations center. We had several people from different entities within the city participate, including Public Works, City Manager's Office, Clackamas Fire District, Oregon City School District, Police Department amateur radio operators, Clackamas County Emergency Management. And basically, what you do is these people all come to the, to the EOC Emergency Operations Center. It's activated. They deal with a real type of exercise, in other words, how will we dedicate our resources to handle this emergency? And people are assigned different roles, and each person role plays this exercise out until the EOC is deactivated. And so that happened this morning, went really, really good, and we periodically, we try to do these about twice a year and activate the EOC and do it with our emergency management partners in the event a real emergency happens. We've done some, some realistic training on it, so it went really well this morning, and it lasted for about two and a half hours, so.
Very good. Thank you. I've got some appointments to make, all the appointments to the different boards I'm speaking to. These are appointments to positions that have been vacated, so they're not full-term appointments. We'll be making appointments later on to terms that start as of January 1st. The appointments I'm making are to the Metro Enchantment Committee, Phoebe O'Leary, who's term one in December 31st, 2012, I'll make a comment about her. I think if we have, if we have things that we want to look at in terms of our, of how we handle our grants and so forth, she is with the Meyer Trust, and we're bringing in somebody that's very experienced in granting issues. Making appointment of Jamie McKenzie to the Oregon City Civic Improvement Trust, Chris Story to the Budget Committee, or that, excuse me, that term for, for the improvement trust is through 2013. Chris Story to the Budget Committee, the term going to December, to the end of 2012. Appointment of Andrew Sines to the Natural Resource Committee, that term going to, through 2012. That's a staggered term because we're, we're reactivating the Natural Resource Committee. And Bob Roth to December 31st, 2014. Does anybody else have reports they wish to make? Commissioner Mum?
I know that Kathy and I attended the Off Leash Dog Park Meeting, which I thought was very good. Apparently, it's the second meeting they've had, and they're looking at forming a 503(c), 503, yes, one of those things. And so it was very informative. They're still looking for places to have the park, and I don't know if Commissioner Roth or Scott would like to speak to that, but I wanted to let people know that that was going on, that we're going to be moving forward with that, I guess, sometime in Oregon City. Did you guys have any comment? No? Okay. The other thing I wanted to say was, I went to the ODOT, or no, I'm sorry, the Jug Handle Project Tour, which was very fun. So thank you, Alita and Nancy, for setting that up. Really got to see the history there with the tunnel going under the Main Street, and it was very exciting. So those are the two things I have.
Anybody else? Well, seeing none, then we'll close the meeting. Order till eight.